Item number three is consideration of a bond anticipation note for Woodhaven and Town Billy with Patty Joy out at Dredgera. Item number four is consideration of a reserve fund transfer with Depp Seaford as finance directly slash town accountant. Item number five is presentation of the bike skills park located on Town Forestland. Graff Lehman, Town Forest and Trails will be here. Item number six is review of the current and board committee vacancy list, which I will discuss with the select board. Item number seven is a consideration of appointment to the ZBA as an associate member for Zach McBride, who term to expire June 15, 2026. Item number eight is an update on the proposed Charles River Public Health District Mass Public Health Excellent Square Program with Jeremy Marsup. Item number nine is the consent agenda, which the town administration's greater table was select board draft minutes in March 16, a one day with the license at Silverwood Farms with Pine Hill School as CSA, a letter of support for the Framingham MVP grant for land acquisition, and our next meeting date of May 25, 2023. And item number 10 is select board report and town administration.
Thank you. Go ahead, Paul. I want to compliment you, Jeff, Jeremy, Diane, for reforming this agenda where you put the routine business items at the end.
Right.
And we go right into the stuff where the public's involved at the beginning.
Yep.
Excellent.
That was me. I don't think I had any, they did that.
That was Jeremy.
So, thank you, Jeremy.
We can sweep them in that way.
Thanks, Jeremy.
So, anyway.
I have a comment on the agenda?
Go ahead.
I think a fair number of the public here, at least the person, is here for number five. Is there any way we can move up number five just for convenience of people? Because I think so is going to take one.
I think.
Yeah, I know we can't move above number one because there are attorneys here. I get that.
I think we could maybe move it to the third. If you want, is that? If the bond anticipation note and reserve fund transfers, we could do afterwards.
Okay. For the people who are presenting, will you be ready to present it a little bit earlier? Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay. So, we're gonna, your proposal, the agenda, one and two will stay the same. The bike park will be number three, and then the bond anticipation will be four, and the reserve fund trust will be five. If that's correct, then we'll go with the rest.
I just want to apologize. That's not ideal.
Is that? All right. So, with that revision, do I have a motion with respect to the agenda?
With approval of the revised agenda.
A second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I guess we're on Zoom, so I have to do a.
No, no, that was just. We were in a. Executive session. You always.
Okay, so the eyes have it, so we will now go to the North Sherburne Water District and Mary or Jeremy, I'm not sure which one of you is going to.
I'll start it out, and Jeremy will help me out as I.
Are you going to share your screen?
I am. Let's see if it works.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to try to move the TV back while she's sharing.
Okay.
And then we'll put it back on the same spot when we go back to non.
Okay.
So, excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The answer is, it looks great.
Yeah, it looks fine. I feel it's, thanks, Sean.
Okay, well, many of you will remember that the town in the last two or three years approved two large developments on Ullin Street. Just to recap quickly what they are, you probably remember, it's Meadow Brook Commons, which is an age restricted development of 67 minutes. You know, single and duplex, that's flexible for over 55. It's an ownership project, basically a condo. Then there is Coolidge Crossing, which is a 40B local initiative project with 120 apartments that are all rental, various sizes, but 25% affordable, which counts for the town toward our 10% state mandated requirement of affordable housing. All 120 apartments would count. Because this allows us to reach our 10% affordable housing, it is a part of why it was approved two years ago now. It doesn't rule out more affordable housing in town. In fact, the town could go ahead and approve more 40Bs, and the current 40Bs that are already on the books and in process would not be affected. But this would give the town some control over developments that it may not want. So, both of these projects have a bit of a history now because developers have changed. I'm sorry, it's not letting me advance my screen. Excuse me, I have to go back to regular view. You know.
Why is it taking down?
You know, my computer is frozen for some reason, so it never happens. That's really strange.
Your mouse is moving.
This works. Oh, they have to do. Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So, these housing developments, just to take a closer look and quickly summarize them, the age restricted development looks like something like this. And here, kind of in its, in the crux of its arm, is the affordable housing development that is blown up over here. It's three apartment buildings with rental units. The age restricted was approved back in 2017. The town approved it and changed the zoning to age restricted zoning, approved the preliminary plan. It still requires a special permit from the planning board, but basically it's this plan that would be approved by planning board. In 2021, the zoning board approved a comprehensive permit for the age restricted 40B reform.
Not age restricted.
I'm sorry. Affordable. Thank you.
Yes.
But by this point, it was clear that both of those would be conditioned on water and sewer from either Framingham or Natick, because it became clear that wells and subjects would not be adequate for these large developments at this site. So, both of them require water and sewer infrastructure. And importantly, the infrastructure was to be funded by the developer, not by Sherburne taxpayers. So, in the interim, and more recently, a new developer has stepped forward and is seriously considered in building both of these and in funding the infrastructure for both. So, they are in the process of due diligence up until the fall, I think the end of October or so. So, if we want these projects to move forward, we have to move forward as a town to get the water and sewer district legislation in place. And that is what this is about tonight. So, what has been done so far? About a year ago, we opened, I should say, me and George, who took the lead on this then, opened further conversations with me and Framingham. But in November of this past year, it really started to move forward, thanks to Jeremy joining the team as the town administrator. And I'll let him talk about the discussions with Natick and Framingham so far.
Sure. So, some of the discussions with Natick and Framingham certainly go back several years. And several years ago, they were actually, they were led more by the previous developer than marshaled along by some of town officials. But more recently, starting this past fall, we have reconnected. There's a, there's a new developer addressed it, but we've also reconnected with new players that are in place in Framingham. There's a new mayor in Framingham, it's a new town administrator. My role here in Sherburne, we reengaged with our neighbors and kind of reinvigorated the conversations again. Previously, there were discussions about sourcing water through Framingham and having sanitary sewer sourced through Natick, but with the current discussions and the, so the partnerships that we've, we've kind of developed in the city of Framingham currently, it looks to be more advantageous to have both water and sewer be connected through the city of Framingham. So, there's some current due diligence going on. The current developer has funded a study of the sewer connection into the city of Framingham. That is ongoing and takes about a month or so to complete, but that would, with the completion of that due diligence, we would have a full understanding of what the potential impacts or mitigation to connect to water and sewer to the city of Framingham would entail. And we've got a very interested and active partner with the city of Framingham.
Right. So, one of the key decisions to be made before this goes forward as, as a water and sewer district is exactly one of the boundaries of the district. How is it going to be governed? What's its relation to the town, et cetera? So, a working group with Jeremy has been working on this and with legal counsel that I'll introduce on Zoom in a moment, to make those basic decisions and try to find a consensus on, on where we begin setting the boundaries of the water and sewer district. I'll come back to that in a moment. But another progress that we've made is that legal documents have been drafted by our, our special legal counsel, Tom Mullin, that tries to capture the consensus of the working group on what the water and sewer district should look like. But of course, none of this, none of these legal documents or legislation can be sent to the state without approval by town meeting. That's the law. So, first, we need approval by the select board and approval by enough people in town so that it can pass a town meeting and so that we, we capture the timeline of the current developer that's seriously interested in this. We would look to a town meeting in the fall if we could. So, we're hoping to finalize this legislation and as soon as we possibly can. And of course, we need a lot more input. So, what we've shown you and what we've, what we've shared is a draft, what we have so far. So, let me just show you who has worked on this so far, but the working group is kind of an informal group. It's not a committee, it's not a commission. It's just me and Jeff Waldron on select board with representatives from DPW, Planning Board, Groundwork Protection Board of Health, water commissioners. And a game changer for us has been the addition of Jeremy, because he didn't mention, but he is a civil engineer, formerly the engineer for Framingham, and more recently, director of DPW in Natick, which is a huge job. And we were lucky to capture him here in Sherburne. It's been extremely helpful because this involves a lot of negotiation with, with both, especially with Framingham at this point, and a lot of understanding of infrastructure. We also have a special legal counsel, because our regular town counsel is based in Framingham and has a conflict of interest, because we're negotiating with Framingham. So, on the advice of Paul and others, we hired Tom Mullin from Wakefield, who's experienced in municipal agreements and water districts. So, let me move on to what the working group has done so far. Our consensus after a lot of discussion is first, well, the water would come from and the sewer would go to Framingham via Kendall Avenue. You can follow the route here along Kendall, down Coolidge, and into the developments, and then back out, actually, it's uphill back to Framingham, requires pumping stations on the way. These little blue dots are just sites where there probably would be a hydrant for fire protection. The purple and the pink here are the two developments we're talking about. The yellow are properties up on Kendall that are already getting water from Framingham for historic reasons. They originally straddled the line between Fram, they were partly in Framingham. The, the one north of Kendall is a single family, large property. This one in the corner, you can see in my cursor, I think, is the age restricted condo called Sherburne Meadows. And right next to it is the farm stand, Sunshine Dairy. So, our proposal right now, our draft of the legislation, is that it would include only the develop, the water district would include only the developments, plus it would have to include people already getting water from Framingham. There would be a meter set up at the town line between Framingham and Sherburne that would measure the water and justify the town and for Framingham for the MWRA. And you can see that it would run past a lot of other properties. So, a key question for the working group was, should other properties be included in this in the beginning or later? We, we decided to, we grappled with it in this way, I should say. We had to strike a balance. First of all, we need to protect this area of town from becoming more like Natick or Framingham. You can see over the border what that looks like. And we wanted to assure the citizens that live along this route, that don't want unfettered development, that, that we would work to preserve the character of the town in this area. And you can also see that it's quite rich in water resources. So, that is one side of the balance. The other side of the balance is that there has to be a way to add properties in the future. If the town determines that properties should be added, then it's a good thing to do, depending on what the addition is for. Any addition, of course, would have costs to the user, because they'd have to contribute to the original infrastructure costs. They would have a share in the investment in the structure and would have to be approved by the, the water and sewer district. So, that was the conundrum, and we tried to build in both things into the legislation. So, I'll turn next to the legislation. Thanks for letting me just run through this. I'm sure there will be a lot of questions. First, the draft legislation establishes the North Sherburne Water District, and a companion legislation will establish the North Sherburne Sewer District, of course, just for simplicity. Tonight, we're concentrating on water district. The water district would be governed by a five-member commission. And remember, this is a separate legal entity, separate from the town, separate from Framingham. Three members would be ultimately, permanent members would be appointed first by the two major developments. 40B perhaps would have two reps, two members in the homeowners association, and the condo would have one. Two members would be appointed by the select board, and that would remain that way. So, the town, the town has a presence on the commission. And in fact, a four out of five vote would be required for any decision taken by the commission. And this allows the town to keep some control, even though it's a separate legal entity. The crux of it is it defines the North Sherburne Water District boundaries, the district service area. We propose that addition of properties to the service area would require a town meeting vote, we're proposing a two-thirds vote. That may be too high a bar, but that's up to the town to decide. For properties within the service area, any change of use or increase in housing units, like a new multifamily or a new business or something like that, would require approval by the commission. Of course, that would be also, that would also require approval by other towns, boards and committees in town. But it would require approval only by the commission, not by the select board of the state. So, we could make changes. The bottom line is we could make changes in the service area without going back and refiling the state legislation. The legislation would remain. And then if you have the time to read through the whole thing, there's a lot of details in it regarding the organization, financial management, et cetera. So, if we come, our goal, I should say, is to come to a consensus on what the legislation should look like in time to bring it to a fall town meeting. First, of course, we need the select board to discuss it. We need to take a public comment. We need to get there so that it could pass town meeting, because it can't be submitted to the state till this past town meeting. Then submission to the state is not the end of the story. There's still a number of other things that would have to happen. The state legislature would, well, the select board would enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Framingham. I think that would also have to be approved by town meeting, but I'm not absolutely sure.
We're sending it as Tom Mullin.
It would not have to. Okay. Certainly, the select board would have to approve it, yes. So, additional, thank you, Paul, additional approvals that are required, first, the state legislature has to establish the districts. Then we have to get an intermunicipal agreement with Framingham approved by Sherburne, Framingham, and the water district commissioners. At the beginning, Sherburne and perhaps, I'm not sure, it may be the developer way to point, temporary commissioners and maybe. And beyond that, the MWRA has to approve the extension of water and sewer into Sherburne. And the Massachusetts Water Resources Commission has to approve an interbase and transfer agreement. There's a lot more, you know, EPA and other things, but I think the biggest hurdle is getting the legislation to the state. And we've already made some progress just in discussions on some of these other things, like the intermunicipal agreement and the MWRA approval. So, we can see our way forward here. And our hope tonight is that we can open the discussion, get select board input, get some public input, and keep the discussion open for the next three weeks at least, and then bring it back to the select board and decide among us, can we be ready to take this to a town meeting in the fall? The legislation could still be tweaked between then and with, and I guess until we submit the article for a town meeting. But we need to decide, are we going to go for this deadline? And are we close enough to go for it? So, that's the end of it.
Mary, just one, one point, just to make sure everybody's understands it. As currently envisioned, the developer would pay all of the cost, construct the necessary infrastructure to make this happen? So, there's no, currently no town share or burden to the contact bears?
Yeah, thanks. That's really an interesting and important.
Well, we would, we'll still be occurring legal costs. In other words, the costs of setting up the intermunicipal agreement and some legal things.
True. That's right.
Can you finish, Mary?
I'm finished.
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
So, a couple of things. First, we've got two districts, and I read the legislation for both of them, and they're virtually the same. And most of my towns that I represent as town council have.
Speak up just a little more, Paul, because the microphone's for everyone.
As one commission to have a water sewer commission. So, rather than having to double cell the legislature on two districts, and it looks like the districts are identical in dimensions, why can't we combine that into one legislative that would be for a water sewer commission? So, that was my first comment. I think it would be easier sell all the way around.
Would you let her answer that?
Yeah. I'd like to refer that to our special counsel, Tom Mullin. He's here in, he's the upper right-hand corner of the screen that I see. I don't know if this is saying on another people's screen. Tom, would you help us with this, please?
Sure. The group considered that, and I think the main objection was that it's likely that there may be different properties, maybe not at first, but over time, that would be become part of the sewer district versus the water district.
Right. And Jeremy has pointed out to us that it's much more costly and complicated to connect properties to the sewer district because there's pumping involved. I should let Jeremy answer this.
Yes, because of the grade difference, that you have to pump the sewer up into Framingham. So, connection of additional properties would involve a bit more infrastructure than connecting into a water main that is already pressurized. So, a little, some more complications from more infrastructure would be needed to expand the sewer district service area as opposed to the water district area.
So, if I can just respond to that, if you've had one commission, you don't have to have the same district lines for the water district and for the sewer district. The point of having everything in one management is that it's hard enough to get volunteers for all the boards and committees that we have here in town to begin with. And now, we're going to be looking at 10 people, yes, someone will be appointed by the private entities, but still, we have to find these people. And there are committees that we have, it's important duties, and we can't find people to serve on.
And that, that's a very good point. We actually discussed that, and I think, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we envisioned that the same commission, the same people would be on both commissions. And I didn't realize that you could have different, you know, boundaries for the two, for water and sewer and still have, do it as a single commission. It does make sense to do it that way if we can. Tom, do you have something you could add to that?
No, I agree. I think that's a very constructive suggestion.
So, I have two other points. One was the fact that.
Keep it up, Paul. They can't hear you.
Every time one of my communities has tried to get MWRA water, there's a joining fee, there's all kinds of fees. You have to buy into your share of their investment in infrastructure and so on and so on. And sometimes those costs are pretty significant. I remember one community had to pay $3 million joint fee. And if we're going to be tying into the MWRA water, has anybody looked at what the costs of that's going to be?
Yes, and that, that's part of the cost that the developer would bear. It's a much smaller volume than, than a, you know, a whole community would be. It's a relatively small amount of volume for water and sewer that we're talking about here. But that, those costs are considered and would be borne by the developer, would not be part of the connection and infrastructure costs. Currently, the MWRA is waiving connection fees for, for extension of their water system. So, they have currently waived those fees for the next several years. So, those fees are, are zero at the moment.
And the third thing is, what's most essential is, is section 12 of Paul's proposed text, which basically says, notwithstanding any general, special law, rule or regulation to the patri, the commission shall not be obligated to allow any land to budding in public or private way in which the public water supply pipe has been laid to be connected with that water supply pipe, except for parcels currently included in or here and after added to the district service area. That's a key provision here, because otherwise, the law in, in the county office, that if you run a water pipe or sewer pipe in front of somebody's house, they have a right to connect. And therefore, if you decide you're going to bring in X gallons of water to service these developments, you're going to find it's going to get diverted. you're going to find it's going to get diverted to all these other people. So this clause is absolutely essential. It has to be done by state legislation. That's not something we could do on our own. We can't change state law. So it's a key part of all of this. But it does allow for a group of five to decide on some things in that area that we as a community may not want to have in that, in that area. But they still have to comply with zoning. They still have to comply with all of the town's rules and regulations, and so on and so on. So if you're going to do a water district, this is the way to do it with that paragraph, Section 12.
That's right. I should also probably direct your attention back to the definitions section, which the definition of the district service area says that the service area may be, I don't have it in front of me, I can probably do it by heart. It may be amended from time to time by a vote of town meeting. So that's kind of an extra step of control that the town has over and above boards and committees that normally review things.
So just, just as a footnote, Paul, this, the last time I passed the general court to adopt one requiring two-thirds, they said majority vote if it's affordable housing, two-thirds if it's not. So there are variations on this.
That sounds like a reasonable variation.
It's good.
Me, yes, good point.
George, I mean.
Go ahead, George. Just wanted to make a comment since I won't be here at the future meetings. So I think, Mary, I just want to compliment Mary and your working group on the progress you've made, because I started out with you on this, and you guys have made leaps and bounds since then, which is great, because this project's so important to the town, especially with water and sewer, because it doesn't affect our aquifers, it doesn't affect the sewage disposal. I think, you know, these projects also get us over that 10%. So I think it's important that we push for a fall town meeting, get everybody on board so we can have, you know, show everybody the town does support affordable housing, so.
Yeah, and assure the developer that's considering this, that the town is serious.
Yes, exactly.
And willing to put their shoulders to the wheel.
Okay, I'm going to keep it moving. So is there any more select board comments before we open it up to the public? All right, Sean, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just trying to ask a question. I want to make a point that any of us public that's going to speak probably needs to go to that table.
That's fine, we can do that. That's a good suggestion, yeah, yeah. So let's start with people in the room. Does anyone in the room want to speak? No?
Yes, yes. I had a question.
Yeah, but hang on a second, I'm doing the room first, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Maybe Bob should.
It's up to you. We can hear you, but you're welcome to go over there if you want to be our camera.
The mic is up there.
The mic's in the green box. Either way, it's fine.
So I hope you'll bear with me, Mr. Chairman, because I've been waiting a long time for a public conversation on this topic. There are many of you on the board who I've talked to about this over the last six months to a year. And I've kind of been begging for this to be a public process because I think it's a really, really important issue in so many ways. And so much work has gotten done in the last six months out of the public eye, and I find that troubling. But that's not really, that's kind of a different. I just want to say that I am 100% in favor of bringing water and sewer into North Sherburne and beyond if we ever can. I think, as you all know, I'm in favor of growth, of smart growth, I'm in favor of affordable housing, both of which, this water and sewer are incredibly important. What worries me about what you're doing is, and I do not oppose the Toll Brothers project, and let's say it out loud, it's Toll Brothers that is being invited into our community here, okay? Toll Brothers, let's say it. And I, you know, that may sound a little bit sour on my part, but given what I see this map looks like, my property is surrounded by the Toll Brothers projects. And what I hear you all saying is, we're going to give water and sewer to Toll Brothers, and we're not going to give it to a guy who has built in this town before and is responsible for $350,000 a year of tax revenue without a single kid in the school. I did that project, and I'm going to be ignored? And the rest of my property neighbors are going to be ignored? I'm very, very troubled by that. So I don't oppose the Toll Brothers project, but I just think the water and sewer should be available for a lot broader part of our community. We've heard for years that general chemical is coming at us with nastiness for our wells. And now we're going to bring water and sewer in? And we're going to bypass all of these homes in North Sherburne? And we're going to give it to Toll Brothers? I don't get that. I really, hey, let me, I've been waiting a long time.
Go ahead, Bob.
So please let me go on. The other thing I have a real concern about is, and nobody's really saying it out loud, but the goal here is to get into safe harbor. That's what's really going on. The goal is to get into safe harbor. And I just want to say, and I said this to the planning board in recent months, in my mind, the goal is not safe harbor. The goal is affordable housing. And the problem with the Coolidge project as a way to get to safe harbor, and follow me on the math here, okay? When that project is done, if and when it's done, we will be in safe harbor. That is correct. However, we will have 4% of affordable housing in our town when we're done. Not 10, we'll have four. Now, I know it's perfectly legal that we're in safe harbor, but six of the 10 points are not actually affordable housing. They're market rate housing that get counted under state law, all legal. But I think we have an obligation to have 10% of real affordable housing. My project on Washington Street, 40 affordable housing places for people to live. Not 10 with 30 market rate, 40 actual affordable housing. And now, like I said, I don't oppose this project, but I want real affordable housing. I want 10% of real affordable housing in town. And I heard a year and a half ago, someone on this board, who I won't name tonight, said, well, if we get water and sewer in town, I don't want it to be used for any more affordable housing. So I hear from Mary, oh, Bob, you know, maybe you can get a two-thirds vote, and we'll do more affordable housing. Well, I heard a select board member say, no, we're not going to use this for any more affordable housing. And I think that's wrong. And I think it even has fair housing issues when you say, whoa, affordable housing? No, water and sewer coming in, but not for affordable housing. So I just have a lot of these different issues. You know, these are not, this group of people was never appointed by the select board. They're off working on this, they're not public meetings, none of us are invited. I called multiple select board members as a property owner in North Sherburne and said, I want to be involved in these conversations before the decisions are made. And now I hear the group has made the decision not to include anyone except Toll Brothers, and it's done, it's done. And I don't like that. And I want to see this be a public process. I'm perfectly willing to lose in a public policy debate in this town. God knows I've done that. I've lost lots of things in public policy debates. But I want to have the public policy debate. I don't want it to happen, not in a public meeting, behind closed doors, by six people who chose them.
Well, I guess I would say that this is the public hearing, that's why we're having it here tonight.
But there's already a proposal, Jeff.
Well, there's a certain amount of footwork that has to be, that has to be done before you can even put something on the table. Somebody has to write the draft.
Okay, so we have a draft. Why, my question is, why is 108 Coolidge not included in the district? Why aren't my neighbors there not included? You've got, you've got right on the border, and then you've got down here, and nothing in between? Well, why is that? Because you're trying to get into safe harbor, and that's right.
Nobody's ever been afraid to say that we want to get into safe harbor.
With 4% of actual affordable housing.
Right.
Can I, can I add something here? Nobody's ever been afraid to say that is our goal. Our goal is to get into safe harbor so we can protect more open land in this town and not have large affordable housing projects spread all over town. I think that's the interest of the town.
Like the 120 apartment units?
On the, on the.
On the other side of the railroad tracks?
No, I didn't say that. You're putting words in my mouth. Bob, Bob, you're putting words in my mouth, and I don't appreciate that.
Okay?
Okay?
Yeah.
To listen as well as talk.
Absolutely.
I'm saying that we are trying to get into safe harbor. This makes sense because we can connect to water and sewer on that part of town, and it protects other land that everybody wants to see. Everybody likes the open land in town. They don't want to see mobile 40-unit apartment buildings spread all over town.
Okay, so what I think you just said.
Yep, you're going to put the words in my mouth.
No, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to try to interpret what you just said. What you just said is that you want to zone by, basically, you're zoning by where you put the water and sewer. Zoning and water and sewer and health, they're separate regulatory issues.
Change the zoning for elderly affordable on that property. We didn't zone by water.
What, but, no, no, what you just said is.
I didn't, I didn't.
You don't want 40-unit apartment buildings built all over town.
Does anybody want 40-unit apartment buildings all over town?
I'll tell you what, there might be, there might be.
I'd rather it was spread out first.
Well, there might be other places that an apartment building would be fine in town. I can think of a place on my street that it wouldn't be bad at all. That's not what we're saying here. This is a start toward getting to at least the state's goal for us. And the fact that only 25% are actually affordable is the state law because otherwise developers can't afford to build these things.
They're not affordable. We'll end up with 4% of affordable housing in our town, we'll be in safe harbor, and we'll never approve another project.
No, that's just wrong. That's putting the word in the mouth.
That's the history of this.
Well, that's not speculative. I think that what I would say is, though, that we're having this discussion, and I notified you this week that we were having this, so you could be here.
Absolutely.
And we welcome your input, and I don't view any of these matters as just decided. The team put together a proposal, which can change. If we want to go to town meeting, we have to make something that we think will pass also, and you make strong points.
And I'm here tonight to ask you to change it.
Yeah, which is fine. We can, hang on, I see, I see Sean's hand, I see Sean's hand. Right now, Bob's got the floor.
See, it feels like spot zoning, okay? You've got, you've got up on the border, and you've got Toll Brothers. If, if, if there's ever spot zoning, that's it. And I don't think that's fair to the rest of the community. And it just exposes what's going on, which is, we want to get 4% of real affordable housing in our town, and we want to stop, and we don't want to face it any further. And I don't want.
One thing I'll say, though, is that part of the reason, and I, you're right in what you said. We all looked at the map, so I'm not disagreeing with you. But that developer has agreed to pay 100% of the cost of it, so.
I didn't say I wouldn't pay for it.
I understand, but if we allow more properties, then they would share in the construction of the piping and all that.
What about if, if, if I'm going to do an all affordable project on Coolidge Street, which I think we all would agree is the right thing to do?
Absolutely.
Then will you give me the water and sewer?
Well, if that could be done, let's take it to the town and say, this is a good thing for the town. And I would go to bat for that, absolutely. And if the town says, yeah, this is a good thing, more diversity of housing options in town, then we would, we would campaign to get a town meeting vote in favor, and it would be possible. That's exactly why it's set up with this kind of flexibility.
Exactly, and I think on Coolidge Street does make sense. And, and single-family neighborhoods, probably not, I stated that before.
Yeah, the state, the state is very, very strong right now on not having all of your affordable housing in one part of your community. That is a really, really bad thing from the state's perspective, that they don't like that.
We do have affordable housing in the middle of town, we have affordable housing on 16, we have affordable housing on North Main Street, so.
But you'll have about 80% of the Coolidge Street.
We probably need to get a little bit more, but I guess what I say is, this is partially location-driven because of the water supply, so that we're not going to pipe everything to South Route 27.
Well, I'm hopeful, Mr. Chairman, if this works, that we can expand it. Because without water and sewer, we are going to be challenged in places, and we can't do the smart growth that the town needs to thrive. And the town, let's face it, the town is not thriving right now. There's nothing, you can't get a sandwich downtown. I mean, you know, we, we, we can do better, and the way we can do better is with water and sewer.
Well, this is a first step.
Yeah, and that's why I'm in favor of it.
If we make the whole town plan, like baby town center, whatever, and not do anything until then, you know it's never going to happen. We have to, I'm not saying this is the first step to water and sewer in town center or all over town, but this gives us water where it's needed.
And I'm not here to oppose it, I'm wildly in favor of it. I just think allocating it just to Toll Brothers is really awful.
Well, we didn't allocate it to Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers stepped forward and offered to take over these developments.
I'm interested, I'm interested right there.
And we didn't give the water to Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers is giving the water.
And Toll Brothers didn't negotiate with us about that. We didn't bring Toll Brothers in. Toll Brothers made a deal with the developer that had the water in control. So don't, I also want to clarify some of these things.
I, I, but I really do appreciate your point, you know that I mean that, but I do think we need to get a few hundred people to speak, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
Could you just tell me where your permits are?
Oh, Mary, so you're going to bring a map? She said trapezoidal property to the left of the.
It's surrounded on three sides.
Yeah.
Which one was project?
I can show you on the screen.
Mary will bring it up on the screen here. Oh, he's standing in the book, too.
Yeah.
You got it? Yeah, it's ready.
Mary, there she is.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Abby has a seat.
So Abby, I think it's next to speak.
You can see my cursor right here.
Yeah. All right, let me just make a bigger view. All right. Go ahead, Abby.
I just wanted to say that this is a long time coming, and 2016, the town came together to really take up the discussion on affordable housing. We created a housing partnership. We worked on, we had a lot of forums, a lot of discussion. 2017, we went to town meeting, and there was a project that would be zoned to DA on Coolidge. Trask as developer at the time, and the understanding that there would be an apartment development that would come separate as a 40B. That project did eventually go forward, the 40B project, and was a lift, a local initiative project, which had a lot of support from people in town. A lot of people worked on it. It got through the zoning board of approvals and all the various scrutiny for the project. And from the beginning, it's been understood that these town-supported projects would need infrastructure. And from the beginning, it was understood that in order to get the infrastructure, an intermunicipal agreement would need to be done, but the town would not want to pay for that infrastructure. So from the beginning, there's the legal discussion of creating that framework that then allows those utilities to be developed, that sets the legal boundaries, and allows then, or a developer, to pay for those. This is the, this has been discussed out in the open for a long time. It was Trask, then it was based on, Toll Brothers is talking now. The key issue is, we as a town need to work on the boundaries in order to allow an intermunicipal agreement, so that the town is not paying for the infrastructure, and whoever is part of that boundary is paying for the infrastructure. And it doesn't matter who the developer is necessarily, when that developer, once the infrastructure is approved, and once the legal language and framework is there, then it allows a serious conversation with the developer. And there will be other reviews on how that development looks and how that, you know, any questions, its scrutiny, there's lots of room for conversation, but who the developer is is a separate issue from the legal definition that allows for an intermunicipal agreement. And I think we need to refocus on, right now, tonight's meeting was introducing the legal language of what that intermunicipal agreement point you set out there is, and what that boundary is, and creating a self-governing, so that it's not town tax payer payment protection.
Thanks, Abby. Sean, did you want to add something?
Only briefly, there's a lot to unpack, and there's a lot to address in the next few months, but I wanted to just address the residents on that, that and the Coolidge and Mattelwork. I don't see any here, but I, they should know, and the town should probably know that this board, since when I was on it in 15, have taught a lot about general capital spill, the potential danger there. We've done everything, and this is the biggest stride the town could ever make to protect those people. We have talked about it in probably every meeting, in discussions of what we do and how we can trigger that, something happens, how town meeting can help to protect those people and utilize this structure, without going to the point of costing them money now with a better, more. So I think it's built in there, and we can discuss it a lot more. By no means did we leave out Mattelwork or the, the end of Coolidge Street. Those residents are probably more protected if this happens than they, than they could ever be.
Okay, are there, are there folks at home that would like to speak now? I can't see any hands raised.
Frank Jenkins?
Frank Jenkins, I had to view him for a sec, that was on me.
All right, and people at home, does anyone at home want to comment on this agenda item? I don't see any hands raised, so we'll move on. We've been on this for 55 minutes, roughly, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, I think. Thank you, though. Thank you, thank you everyone for your comments. So our next agenda item is number two, Elder Housing Committee, and Kitty, Sturgis, and Alicia Goodie are here to talk. So I think if you both sit over there, we can have the, we played with the cameras, so everyone can see you.
Can I just make one comment before we start?
Yeah, you're going a little bit more, Alicia, we're just trying to get you up on screen. There you go. We know you like each other.
It's wonderful to be back in this room. Paul and I opened it up back in, what, 2001, when they redid it, and we had the first meeting up here, and all this furniture is still in place.
I took the chalkboards out, Rob.
I don't think we had chalkboards, most of it is.
I was wondering why your initials were covered.
Right. I see. Sorry to digress, I'm sorry. First of all, thank you very much for having us in this evening. But for the past few months, members of the Sherman Elder Housing Committee, and Alicia Goodie, who's a member of the committee, Claire McLennan is our Woodhaven manager, and myself have been meeting with Elizabeth Rust of Regional Housing Service Office in Acton, Massachusetts, and well-versed on affordable housing. Liz has been helping SHHC bring its policy up to date after Sherman Elder Housing Committee was made aware that our current policies were out of date. So we have taken this opportunity to bring them in line with the current state guidelines, which also simplify operations for our staff. The overall project included a review of the following, as it pertains to the Special Legislation Acts of 1981, Chapter 332, that created elder housing units known as Woodhaven. We have been working on the rent policy. We will be looking at the.
Turn around.
And affirmative fair housing marketing plans.
Please introduce yourself, come here.
Other guidelines. Tonight, Alicia Goodie will present the revised rent policy for your approval. The exact numbers for income limits for 2023 market rent documentation system will not be available until middle May. The objective of tonight's meeting is to have the Sherman Select Board vote approval of the rent methodology, sorry for being silly, as step one in the larger effort, because rents will take effect July 1st. Going forward, we will be working on the other above-mentioned items. When finalized, we will bring them to the Select Board for approval. The entire Sherman Elder Housing Committee Board thanks you for listening, asking questions, and for your support over many years. Alicia, for your choice.
Thanks, Kitty. As Kitty mentioned, the authorizing legislation, and Paul will remember this, I think, in addition to authorizing the town to borrow money to construct Woodhaven, authorize the Elder Housing Committee to separate rents and establish rental policies. And so the current method for calculating the rents was voted by the Elder Housing Committee and approved by the Select Board on April 24th, 2012. So that's been in place for a while. And rents are adjusted annually on the 1st of July, which is consistent with the town's fiscal year. The monthly base rent amount for current residents remains the same amount as for the previous year, and is adjusted on an annual basis for the maintenance fee, which is described on the next slide. The monthly base rent amount for new occupants is a monthly payment for a moderate-income rental, which is determined by HUD, through the Fair Market Rents applicable on January 1, published by HUD, and is subject to maintenance fee adjustments, which I will now describe. So basically, when you come into Woodhaven as a tenant, your rent is established based on certification of your income. And then the next July 1, you come in, previous July 1, your, that rental figure is adjusted by the maintenance adjustment, and that becomes your new base rent. So, and then as each year goes by, and the adjustment is made, it sort of tops off the previous year's rent, if there is an increase. So the methodology that's in place now is that rental increases are calculated by adjusting the maintenance portion, and that's the annual Woodhaven operating budget. And take that by the average percentage change in social security benefits of the current calendar year and two previous years. So basically, you take a three-year percentage of the social security increase and add that or adjust that to the maintenance portion, and that's the new percentage increase for the rent. And the adjustments are capped. The adjustment can't cause any monthly payment to exceed the maximum rent payment allowed by HUD for a possible moderate-income apartment at the time of the adjustment. So there is a cap, even if there's a significant increase in marginality or social security benefits. The revised rent policy that we are asking for whom for this evening is consistent with the method that's used by the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, and it's used by all state subsidized rental developments, including 40B developments. So basically, what we're asking for is to bring our current methodology into alignment with what the Mass Department is using in, and other subsidized rental developments, too. So this method, the scarious gross rent, is calculated using 30% of the annual high income allowance from the tenant first.
Alicia, can you just stop for a second? Sean, you want to pull that back so people can see? Bob, I feel bad here, but leaning over to look at that, you want to pull the TV back again so people can see it? Thanks. Bye, guys. Well?
Yeah, it's centered.
I have to go to school. You have a problem.
So the gross rent under the new policy is calculated using 30% of the annual high income allowance for the tenant first, you said. But the change that we're proposing is that, rather than the maintenance fee adjustment, the utility allowance is subtracted from the gross rent to arrive at the net rent amount. And that utility allowance that's used is that published by the Grand Canyon Housing Board. So it's consistent with the 40B units in the next town. And under the revised policy, existing tenants will be assessed for 2% rent increase on an annual basis. Now, HUD allows a 5% increase, but the committee feels that an adjustment of 2% is more appropriate. But it is capped at 5%. And so basically, the benefit that we see at this point in revising the rent policy is, again, consistency. It makes us, our policy, consistent with that used by the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, and it brings us into alignment with other subsidized rental developments as well. It's standardized, it relies on published data, and it's, is very administratively efficient and operationally efficient. Again, the allowable increase is 5%, but we are proposing 2% increase.
Well, I have a question. Chapter, if I may mention, Elizabeth, Elizabeth here, is on the, on the screen, as well as Claire. Liz Rust.
Liz is, Liz Rust is on the call, she's the consultant that advises us, and Claire is the property manager just so people know who they are. So, yeah, leave a slight word comments first, questions first, please.
Marion first, I think.
Alicia and Kitty, is there any provision for a situation in which a tenant has a significant fall of drop in income, or are they locked into the?
No, that, that's taken into consideration of the, under the policy, I agree.
Paul, do you have a question?
I, I was going to commend the group for their effort to do this revised rent policy. One of the issues that we have in town here is that Woodhaven needs to be made more consistent with the state activities. This does bring us consistent and an important part of the regulations, so I support it.
Okay, great, any other select or comment? You're in now, are there any public comments, anybody in the public want to speak? Go ahead, you stay here, people still see you, I think, or.
I apologize for speaking so much today, but unfortunately, two topics that are really important to me happen to be back-to-back on the agenda. I'll disappear for a while.
Yeah.
So, as you guys know, I was the one who brought it to your attention, that there were some issues here. And I served briefly on the board of Woodhaven until I had to step down because of a conflict with Abbey Road. So I know a little bit more than maybe some folks. But the other thing I know a lot about because of my development work is the subsidized housing inventory list of the state, which is how we, when we talk about 10%, that's what we count. It's the subsidized housing inventory list. Woodhaven is about, I believe, about a third, or maybe even close to a half, of what we count currently as our affordable housing. My concern, what I brought up, was that I believe we are out of compliance, and that Woodhaven, despite the fact that it's an incredible gift to the community and operates in a way that is fabulous, it's, according to the rules, and in, 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 in real ways also, I would say, it's not affordable housing. And the reason for that is, is that in order to be affordable housing, it's a very well-prescribed process you have to go through in terms of selecting your tenants for your affordable units. You have to check their income very carefully, you have to monitor it over time. The property needs to have a deed restriction on it, which was never put on it back 40 years ago when it was built. I mean, there are basically multiple problems with compliance, and I'm not saying anything negative about Woodhaven. It is a great, great resource for the community, but it's not affordable housing right now. And the problem with it is that the state takes this stuff pretty seriously. And those 24 units might be the difference between you all being in safe harbor or not. They're, they're not currently in play, but they could be. And so I came out and I said, I want you guys to get in real compliance. And that includes having a deed restriction, that includes income verification and monitoring, which I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear that tonight, am I correct?
I think, you didn't hear it, but I think that's included. You're going to be, in the past, we used only doing verification on the moving date, but now we're going to do it annually, is that correct?
We have to do it annually.
There, there's some things they didn't say.
Well, you have to, you have to make sure that folks are below the income thresholds before you allow them to rent, because otherwise, even if your rents are low enough to be affordable, it's not affordable housing if you're not reserving it for people in need. That's the simple way to put it. So I guess, long story short, I would ask this board to remove these 24 units of housing from the SHI until the time comes when you're fully compliant with state law. And if your council is willing to opine that you are in compliance with state law, then, fine. But it's pretty obvious to me that we're not in compliance, and I would ask this board to remove these units until such time as you are in compliance with state law, because what's going to happen is, if you leave them there, the ZBA is going to deny a comprehensive permit by saying you're in safe harbor, and then guess what? You're not, because those 24 units are not compliant with being on the SHI.
We, we, we don't feel that's true, Bob. Do you want to talk to them, or do we want Liz to talk to them?
I think Liz is more appropriate to talk to that.
Do you want to address Mr. Versus' comment, or maybe introduce yourself and your background, Liz, since people know?
Sure, sure, hi, I'm Liz Rust. I'm consultant to the town for affordable housing, and I've worked in the affordable housing area for almost 20 years, specifically for municipalities. I'm very familiar with all of the items that are being discussed tonight, and do that as part of my professional background. So I'm, I work, as I say, for the town in various monitoring agent capacities. We do some of the work for Leland Farms and other that, and we've been helping the Woodhaven team work on their affirmative fair housing marketing policies. And so I think, as Kitty mentioned, the policy that's in front of the board tonight is specifically the rent policy, because the rents take effect July 1. So, and as Kitty mentioned, that the next pieces would follow from there to go for the full affirmative fair housing marketing plan, but the full park package is not being presented tonight, just the rent policy. In terms of how these units might count or not count, whatever, on the SHI, these units were created well before the current regulations from DHCD. And there are many, I would venture to say, most towns have units that were created back before the year 2000, back underneath very different guidelines that were eligible at the time and qualified to be on the SHI at the time. And as the guidelines have changed, it's not the policy of DHCD to retroactively go back and look at units that are on the SHI as they've changed requirements. It's kind of like zoning when you're grandfathered in. As zoning changes over time, they don't go back and say, oh, well, now, you, you know, you have to remove your house. You know, you're sort of grandfathered in there, and that's, that's how it is. The state has no. The state has no policy to, to remove items from the SHI. But it's not to say that someone could litigate and, and challenge that some units should be on the SHI or should not be with their particular merits. So, but it's not, it's not something that they do, because there, there are thousands and thousands and thousands across the state that do not meet current guidelines, but met them at the particular time that the, that the units were eligible. In terms of an affordable housing restriction, which I think the gentleman referred to as a deed rider, it's a, back in, back in those days when special legislation was created that placed affordable housing requirements on properties, the state allowed that to serve as an affordable housing, you know, restriction, if you will, on the property, though it doesn't meet the current legal forms. So that's just one of the differences. Be that as may, the town and Woodhaven has opted to, you know, wanting to, to, to bring their residency and their marketing practices into compliance with the current guidelines. And that's what the team is working on.
I have a question. Yeah, she just reinforced one thing that she said, which is that this is just part of their plan, the rent policy. But go ahead.
My order is that we have before us a rent policy.
Correct.
We don't have before us, basically, most of the issues that have been raised and are now suddenly being discussed. That's my intention.
It's important to discuss the whole picture, because to Bob's point, we haven't really been discussing this publicly. So we're trying to at least make people aware of the whole issue. But you're right, we're only voting on the rent policy tonight.
Chip, can I make?
Yeah, but yes, you can, George, but are you finished, Paul?
Yeah, I just want to keep this meeting moving along.
Exactly. But these are big issues in the town. I understand that, but these are very big issues to have been, you know.
Then we should have another agenda on, on those issues, but that's not tonight's topic issue.
I have a question about the rent policy.
Go ahead, George.
Howie's going to make a motion to recommend approval for this rent policy.
Second.
Okay, so before we go, before we vote, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I have a question about the rent policy.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get there.
But it is relative to what you said. You talked about your grandfathering, blah, blah, blah. Does any of that grandfathering, would that be compromised if we changed the rent policy that existed pre-2000?
After I know of, Liz answered that. I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. In other words, who did before 2000?
We're counting, we counted under our whatever affordable S-whatever, under SHI, because we actually pre-existed and were approved before 2000. This old rent policy existed before 2000 as well.
That's what went from 2012.
Okay.
I think that the rent policy is in line with the way that the, you know, that the, the state and all the other projects compute rent. And it is very similar in terms of the results to the tenants. And it's much more streamlined operationally. So it was a logical place to start and to do this for effective July 1.
I get that, but my concern, well.
You're okay? Do you have a question, Mary? So, a motion has been moved in second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Five to zero.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Bob, for your comments.
And so we're going now, as we voted at the beginning, we're now going to take item out of order, number five, which is bike skills park. Chairman? I want to make a couple of comments before we introduce Lee. Okay, sure, go ahead. We'll name the chairman over here.
Right, I'm vice chair.
I'm Steve Petty. I'm on the Town Forest Committee. And before introducing Ralph Lehman, I have a few comments that I'd like to make. Pardon me, I'd like to read it so that I don't leave anything out. Sarah Raggy, who I do know very well, has been in opposition, has proposed bike skills park since it was first proposed. Any citizen has the right to voice opposition to virtually any proposal put forth. And I want you to know that I honor and respect that. I do, however, want to point out that Sarah and only a handful of others have not ceased in fighting this issue even after proposing and putting the town through a lengthy survey, which resulted in final numbers that support the bike park. She has written a letter to the Select Board opposing the proposed skills park. In her letter, she asked the question of whether the proposal includes adding additional trails. No, it does not. She also states that the skills park is incompatible with the regulations of the use of Sherburne Conservation and Town Forest land by law. I would have to say that I disagree with this interpretation and also point out that the regulations have been changed since written in 1981. Sarah goes on to argue her point by referring us to an article that talks of the impacts of mountain biking on natural environment. The article deals with mountain biking in designated wilderness areas, which Sherburne Town Forest definitely is not. The only designated wilderness area in Massachusetts is on Montomoa Island off of Kent County. To compare Sherburne Town Forest to a wilderness area is outlandish, in my opinion. One of the main reasons for choosing this location for the skills park is its close proximity to ongoing activity. Pine Hill Playground, approximately 200 yards away, is busy with children playing and the resulting sounds this creates. Pine Hill Cemetery is just downhill from the proposed site, where weekly mowing and leaf blowing can be heard. Ward Parks Pond Playground is approximately 500 yards, producing the lovely, producing even more sounds of children that play. The pickleball courts produce the lovely ping sound every time the ball is hit. And the sound of train whistles and emergency sirens can be heard on a regular basis from this proposed location. Lastly, as I've pointed out at previous meetings, Sherburne Town Forest land has been given up in the past for the construction of Pine Hill School in the mid-'50s, the construction of Woodhaven in the early '80s, or in addition to Pine Hill School in the 1980s, for the construction of Leland Farm Housing in the late '90s, and for two cell towers, one on Rush Hill and one near Mount Misery. I find it hard to believe that, given the intensity of these projects, that a skills park would be deemed inappropriate. With that, I'd like to introduce Ralph Lehman, who will give his presentation.
I'll go as quickly as possible. I know it's getting late. I'm Ralph Lehman. First of all, thank you, everyone, both here and at home for your time and consideration of the skills park. I really appreciate it. Very quick background. I mean, I've been a Sherburne resident for almost 17 years. I live on Old Orchard Road, right at the end of the Bailey Trails, and I'm a huge fan of all the natural spaces in Sherburne. I'm a big user of the trails, a big proponent of sharing the trails, because I know they're a joy to all different folks in town and neighboring towns for a variety of uses. I myself, I like to mountain bike on the trails. I like to hike on the trails. I've crossed country skied. I've snowshoed. Probably the only thing I haven't done is ridden a horse yet on the trails. I hope to do that someday. But I respect everyone who's using it in a variety of ways. I'm also the vice president of the Sherburne Forest Trail Association. I've been for many years, but I'm not here in this, in that capacity. I'm here just as a proponent of the skills park. So turning to the proposal, which I think is being shared, that's going to be awfully hard to read for people in the room, but hopefully people who are looking at a screen can see it. But I'll try to point out the, the important parts. This has been presented to Town Forest previously, so.
James, are you able to zoom in on that?
Let me see. Hang on.
What is James?
Get some of the waiting on top.
Hey, hold tight. Hang on. I'll see if I can.
About five handles I brought just to face, because you never know with technology, and if people want to share those around, I can do that as well. Yeah, because we, we have it. You guys have it. Okay, great. So this is just anybody here who wants to share. It's, it's virtually identical to what was distributed many weeks ago at the Town Forest meeting, but put in, in the document, some of the things that I just said verbally, because I think they got lost. So it starts out by saying, we're proposing to enhance Sherburne's existing trail network with the skills park. Okay, so I just want to, that, that wording may be confusing to people. As Steve said, this, this proposal does not include any additional trails. We are enhancing the trail network by adding a skills park with various features. And basically, the idea is for users of all ages of the trail to have an area near where the trails are that are, that look a lot like the trails. And it's an opportunity to practice some of the skills that you'll use on the trails with your bikes, so that as you ride the trails, you'll be a more competent user. And we also hope to have signage at the skills park to help communicate the etiquette of the trails. And I think, I think the word here was environmental stewardship. So part of what we want to convey to folks is things like, when is a good time to use the trails and when is not? You don't want to use the trails when they're wet. How to ride on the trails to avoid damaging the trails, such as not skidding on the trails or driving around any wet spots that widen the trails. These are, these are things that the, the groups of riders in town have been talking about for many years, about the way to make sure that trails don't damage the environment. And, and also things like, if you see a horse, you've got to stop and get off your bike. Everybody yields to horses. And bikes yield to pedestrians. A lot of times pedestrians have courtesy, will step off the trail, not the bike though. But, but bikes are last on the list in terms of yielding to the trail with pedestrians in the middle. And these are things that we want to teach new riders and old riders to, to improve everyone's experience on, on the trails. Construction of the skills park has been widely supported in the recreational community. So this, I honestly don't remember if this was my idea or somebody else's idea, but the reason I'm here before you is because there were a whole bunch of people who said, this would be great. They're doing this in a bunch of other towns. Ralph, can you, can you help spearhead this and get us permission and do it? We've got a fantastic group of volunteers who have very generously volunteered their time to come out and construct this thing. So that's, that's why I'm here. It's, it's multiple generations of people. We've got young riders, and it's really nice that there's an appreciation of nature and trails. And to that end, we did conduct a survey, and I've added some of the results in here. But we basically had about 58% who either said that they definitely would or probably would like this park. And we had about 40% who said they probably would not, or definitely would not. And that was the most, the second most popular item in the survey. Number one was grooming the winter trails and packing the snow down so you could use it in the winter, which I'm also a big proponent of, and actually the guy who does that when there's snow. So hopefully we'll have snow again, and then we'll do that. But, but 58 to 40 is, is, in this divided political world that we live in, is kind of a landslide on most, on most surveys, I think. So, and, and just, I thought I'd mention too, because there has been some, there have been some comments about the mountain bike trails that were built up on Pine Hill. Some of, I think most of the criticism was just about the process that was followed and the notification, which suffered a little bit during COVID. But of the people who have either used or observed the new trails, so if you've seen these trails and you responded to this question, 44% were very satisfied, 15% were satisfied, so that's 59%, 34% said neither, 4% said dissatisfied, and 3% very dissatisfied. So only 7% of the people who have seen these trails said they were either dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. And, and I think it's probably a lot of the same people who will be, who would be working on the skills park and would have the same appreciation for nature and for the use of the trails. Okay, so how did we pick this particular area? I, I hope it's clear about what sort of the idea is, you know, behind this and, and kind of what it is, although there are pictures coming. But the next question was, where should we do this? And number one consideration was, we want to minimize damage to nature as much as possible, have it look and feel very similar to trails around town, not even just the mountain bike trails, but the trails in town, where, yes, it's an infringement on nature, but it's small, it's unobtrusive, and you try to minimize any damage. So that was number one, one condition. But we also had several other conditions. So one was that we wanted to approximate natural riding conditions. So people are riding their mountain bikes on trails all over town, as you know. The, the new mountain bike trails, we've separated some of the traffic off, which most, most people think is a pretty good idea for the higher speed riders, et cetera. But you can ride your mountain bike on most of the trails in town. It's allowed. And we wanted this park to feel very similar to those trails, because that's the way you're going to learn how to ride on the trails. So it's got to be a natural setting, ideally in the woods. We also wanted it to be accessible from existing trails, because there's not a ton to this skills park. It's not the kind of thing where a parent drops a kid off and they spend two hours at the skills park. It's probably 15 minutes is going to be something like the average visit time. And I know they just haven't gone to others. So the idea is that you have it set in the trails, and you want to go out for a ride on the trails. But while you're passing through, you stop at the skills park and you have a chance to kind of try some, some of the features out. So you don't want to do it on a field or on a paved area or something like that. You want it accessible from the existing trails, rather than a destination in itself, explain that. And you don't really want it to be accessible directly from the road. And that was something I heard from the folks who did a similar skills park, a bigger one out at West Hill Dam, where they said, you don't want people loitering. You try to, you want to discourage loitering. You don't want, you know, anybody to just kind of drive up to this park and hang around and sit on the wood and drink beer or who knows what. You want somebody, it's oriented to bikers, so you want, you want them to bike in at least a little bit of a way. It's not too far, but kind of be off the street and into the woods. And we want to have an appeal to a wide range of riding abilities. That's really more about the, what kind of features we're going to have in there. We'll probably have a couple of kind of things where you drop off something that's common on our natural trails, where you go over a rock and drop a foot or two. And it's a real, I've practiced on this, and it's a lovely way to learn, to get much more comfortable with this, because you start out with a, with a small step down, and right next to it is a little higher one, and right next to it is a little higher one, and you kind of work your way up to the comfort level. And they're designed with a ramp on the downside. So if you get to the edge of it, you change your mind, you don't fall over the edge, you ride down the ramp. So that's just an idea of, of the kind of features. So those are the, those are the criteria. On the next page is a map. Now, I, I did hear from some folks that they had a hard time kind of figuring out where in town this map was. If interested at the end, we've got an interactive map and we can zoom out, we can show you. But, you know, Pine Hill School is just off the map, up to the, up to the upper left. And the cemetery is just left of this. So as you come up from Pine Hill, there's a trail that goes up a hill. You make your first right, and then that's where you get to the access trail. And on the maps, it's pretty much the peak of Pine Hill. So it's at a high, flat area. And we've also, we, we got some feedback that we should have had pictures of the actual area. And I have some of those. I can either hand those out or we can do a screen share again if people want to see.
Scroll back to the map, so they scroll down at the back of the picture.
James, can we scroll back to the map? Okay.
What's the dark green?
That's, that's, I think, the property where Pine Hill School is. So Jamison Field.
And this is the cemetery, right? That's the cemetery road?
Yeah. James, are you able to switch over and zoom out by any chance?
Yeah, hang on. Let me see if I can switch what I'm sharing to that.
And while he's doing that, anything else in terms of questions for this?
We take questions from the select course first.
Yeah, you know what? We should, I'm not, I'm not quite done, so maybe I was just trying. Sorry, maybe go back to the presentation, because I don't mean to distract off. We'll, we'll come back.
No, I think people have the same question. They want to get my perspective, so I think this is relevant.
Can you see that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the dark green is the whole sort of Pine Hill complex.
It's just south of Pine Hill.
Yeah.
So, can you see that screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. This is the trail that goes right out of the back of Pine Hill, straight due, due east, up the hill. It's kind of a double wide track. The new, the new Pine Thrill Trail, and there's a sign marking it right there. Just before you get there, you make a right, and this goes up a hill, and then it's right in this area right here. And it, it does cover that peak of Pine Hill.
And that road is Lake Street to the right?
Yeah, that's Lake Street. That's the school. That's the cemetery. So you'd have to ride a little bit. It's nice. There, I mean, there is parking here, and that's great. But again, we, we're hoping people are riding. I mean, you have to ride to it, not, not drive to it. And it's up in there, so you could do the trails, and you can try some things, and then you can try the mountain bike trail or go elsewhere.
It's a place to the center of town, so most people have equal access to it.
Yeah. And the other thing about it, it's, it's a wide open space. So we had the same issue when we've done a couple of the new trails, where we try to find a place that, you know, I mean, we're not going to cut trees, big live trees down. We don't want to have to dig up a lot of brush. I think there's sort of two reasons for that. One, we want to preserve as much of the natural habitat as we can. The other is it's a lot more work. If you, you know, there are places, when you go out to build a trail, that you see a natural trail. It's the stuff where there isn't a lot of plants and trees and things like that. So this was an area that kind of jumped out to people who had gone by it, really, James, because. Because and we can.
Want to see the photos now?
Show some of the pictures, but it's a pretty, it's just sort of a naturally flat, pretty wide open. Trees aren't real dense, not a lot of underbrush. And so it's sort of, it it seemed like a great, a great spot. And and you can access it from a from an existing trail. The 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 access trail, the little, to me, it's like a, it's like a string on a balloon, except it's above that little access trail. Is also very natural and clear. There isn't, it's not, you don't have to fight to get in there. We would have, as I mentioned, some signage at at the park itself with some information about trail etiquette, et cetera. We'd have beginning, intermediate, advanced options. And a variety of features. And the features are, you know, some wooden features, some trying to use, you know, there might be logs that we can use that are already down the ground. And there are a bunch of trees that have fallen down. We kind of clean up that as part of the part of the effort. You'd see that in the pictures. And 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 part of the reason that we and and rocks and things like that, but part of the reason we haven't done an actual, you know, here's exactly where everything is going to go like you would plan out if you had a wide open space, is that you don't know until you get up there and start digging a little bit, you know, and moving dirt, what's underneath it, where the natural contours are. So so we want to make it a very organic process and and that's, that's why there's, you know, we have to see what we what we get when we get up. And and so what we've included are, these are from this West Hill Dan skill park. That's a much bigger trail area and it's a much bigger park. Ours would not be as big as this. And I think a couple of things to point out, that's a great picture right there. One of the things on that picture is that where they did it, it was in an area where you had a lot of dirt roads right around it. So it, so some of the dirt that you see is is already dirt roads. Actually, not in that one, but the next one. But this one shows, it's a little hard to see. It shows what would be the widest feature, which is this is, these are these progressive drops that I mentioned, where you've got a, you know, a one foot drop, a two foot drop, a three foot drop, something like that. And it's really nice to have those next to each other because you want to approach them in the same way of similar speed. You don't want three completely different drops in different areas. So that's what really helps build the skills I know because I've done those three personally. It was a big accomplishment, actually, because I didn't pick out that big one. And that's where the, that's where you have a little bit of a wider area. But a lot of the other kinds of features, and you also see that there's a lot of trees in there. I mean, you see some dirt, but you see a lot of trees and and that was left there and trees weren't cut down. James, if you keep scrolling a little bit. So that's called a skinny. And that's a place where you'd have a narrow feature to ride on. And these, what's lovely about that is it's a what we call a low consequence. Because there are narrow bridges in different riding areas around the state. But some of them are four feet above the ground or above a big mud pit. And it's, you might want to try it, but you won't want to fall in this if you come off the, if you come off of it. It's no big deal. You just ride on the ground. And and so it's a great way to learn the skills. And that other one is kind of a windy one. So those are the kind of features. And again, I don't think we have that much dirt showing, but we would work around the trees. And so we probably move on to the next one. This is the one that I was mentioning that has a has a dirt road off on the left. That's kind of a corner turn. And that's probably one of the more elaborate things. I don't know for sure that we would do that one. But there are some places on the trails where you kind of have what's called berm. And, you know, it takes a little bit of technique to kind of feel comfortable riding.
It's like a bank, bank turn.
It's a bank turn. Yeah, yeah. So that's the idea of the kind of thing we would have. And then the last couple are just, you know, we got some designs for how do you, you know, how would you make these things? So it's just to show that we've got some expertise and some plans to work on. other than that, I mean, I think there have been some questions and concerns that have come up. And I think we've answered those previous meetings. So I'm not going to say, I don't think I need to say what those are. But if people have questions or concerns, I'm happy to answer them.
I have one question. It's it's more of my ignorance is, does this get reviewed with CONCON? Like, are there any areas or trails already established so they don't have to re-review it? You know what I'm saying?
My understanding, and everybody who was watching.
I don't, I don't know either.
In the town forest.
Yeah.
You know, CONCON has has purview over anything that's a wetland or a borderland or anything that's.
Right, right.
Buffer zones, all of that. But in town forests, they don't have the purview unless it is near a wetland. And this is, this is the highest area there. And and we found, you know, that was, that's very near where we did this Pine Thrill Trail.
Yeah.
And it's it's really one of, and it's turned out to be one of the driest trails in town because as you know, right now, mud everywhere. This thing is up and the way the turns are and such, it drains really well. And so so CONCON is not.
Yeah, because I know some of the rocky, rocky woods, some of the trails are really wet down there by the Charles.
Yeah, and we're working on trying to do some some.
Build bridges. I'm still sure the voice, I think you build some bridges that Ziegler projects.
So we we're working on it. We're working on it.
So the Forest Select Board comments.
Just, um, I get my comment, just consistent with what I said two weeks ago, is, um, I think our discussion, you know, should large media be on like, do we have, you know? So right now, the Forest Committee made a vote, had an open meeting, duly advertised, and they voted to actually move forward with this. So basically, do we have either the right or, you know, to override that? Or do, I don't think we do, or do we are worthy within their scope? I think maybe that should be a lot of our discussion here. You know, I mean, but you might like the project, you might not like the project. But this is an approved project approved by the Town Forest Committee. So I do want to make sure we keep that in our in our sights here. I did have one question just on the aspect of the trail itself. So I think it's, you know, interesting construction, it's nice. Is there any, what are the plans like long term maintenance? Like, is the Forest, is the Forest Committee kind of going to maintain this in perpetuity?
Well, I don't think it's the Town Forest Committee right now that is, that we're expecting to maintain it. I think it's it's volunteers who are building it. And I think the hope is that it's, you know, we're starting with young people and 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 as new young people come through, they'll enjoy it and 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 will maintain it. But it is volunteer.
The Rocky Nearest is my, happened near my house and I use those, those bridges all the time.
Yeah, and I also commented that the way it's been presented, you know, there aren't going to be major structures built up here. Most of it's going to be quite natural. So if it ends up that after several years, it isn't being used anymore, it's just going to go back to its natural state, it isn't much different than the two lead to's that the Boy Scouts had in the town forest of Main Street years ago. I challenge you to find them today. They ultimately weren't used and weren't maintained and then disappeared. And James?
No, I, uh, just, just to agree with Eric. I think this is within the town forest purview. I think it's great that they're thinking outside the box. But I, back a long time ago, when I was on the revenue development committee with Heather Willis, she brought up the idea of using some of our, we have such an extensive network of trails in town to do some diversity of of use in these trails rather than, you know, just have plain old trails. And she talked about ropes courses and stuff like that. But this is, this is fantastic. I think, I think it's great that that they're doing this. And I think it is within the town forest purview.
Go ahead, Mary.
All right, I mean, the basic question has been, for me, you know, how much of a change would go beyond the town forest committee's purview? Because the law is very vague, as we all know. It really is up to us, up to the town forest committee and the town side. Is this something that's within, you know, what's a reasonable thing for town forest? It's, it's a, it's a big gray area. So this project kind of makes a good case in point. And I I have been skeptical about it because I love the town forest. I'm a biologist. I mean, every living thing, you know, it's really important to me. But I I do see the value of this. And I see that, I I see, you know, the the age of kids that are in town forests riding their bikes, this would be a good thing for it. My main concern is that this, if it's to be done, be done in a way that really seriously minimizes damage to the environment. So I went up there yesterday to scope it out and just check to see if there were ticks around, and there were. But one of the reasons I picked up a tick, it didn't attach. But I picked it up because there are quite a lot of low bush blueberries in there. And for most people, that's just kind of a, a little brush. You know, you wouldn't pay much attention. It's, but they're not thick in there. I, I agree. That's a native plant that we don't want to willy nilly destroy if we can avoid it. But looking in there, I could see that there are ways to do this that would not involve taking down any trees, except maybe a pine sapling, but we take those down all the time. And that could avoid damage, low bush blueberries or the Canadian mayflower. So the things that people value are native. But I think I would be more assured if I knew that you were going to take somebody with you when you go up. You know, you're going to map these trails. You're not going to just build them one day. We've been, as we've made new trails for town forest, uh, town forest and trail association. And we always go in and kind of map with red markers, you know, where this is going to go and where that's going to go. And we we feel we have to do that. And I think you guys will do that too, I assume you will. Or you should, is what I'm saying. And I would be totally assured about this. If you were to take somebody up there when you've got it flagged, let's say, who who knows something about the the flora and fauna and can help you, or say before it's flagged, it's good that it's not flagged yet, help you choose air, choose routes around these trees and wherever you're going, that just minimizes the damage to the flora. And that would allow you to do it and assure people that are worried about the impact on the environment.
So in terms of the flagging, I'm not 100% sure of the requirements. What we've flagged now is is sort of the whole area.
Right, but what I'm saying.
But we haven't flagged like this thing's going to go right here.
Well, what I'm suggesting is when you decide where things are going to go, you might have a, you know, reviewed by somebody who might say, well, you know, you're destroying a patch here that's not, there's native plants, maybe you can take it that way instead. I mean, if you're willing to have that influence, I'd be much assured that this can be done safely. There's, there's nothing in the law. I'm just personally suggesting.
I mean, so they would hire consultants?
No, no, no. I mean, there are people in town, you know, it was discussed at Open Space Committee on Monday. And a member of Open Space Committee that might even be on this call, I don't know, would probably be very, very likely to listen. Ecology, natural history guy. Could go and, you know, just sort of make suggestions. It would be the best.
How about, how about, sorry, Sean, how about the town arborist?
Yeah, that would be great.
They go with the.
Well, we had one.
I wonder if a future selectman's or select board member's wife might be.
Yes.
She's still there?
Not here.
I wasn't going to name it in.
Yeah, this is an area that is, I saw an area that's wide open like this, and that's correct. But behind there, you see that green haze that's all made of.
Yeah, I don't think it's flat because I know, because I was trying to help you find our area and I don't think you saw any of the flags. So I'm not sure if you were right here, but there you can see one of the flags.
Yeah.
On there. So and James has about three more pictures.
Yeah.
To, that don't show flags, but there, it's pretty, you know, we really picked the wide open spots there.
Right, so I would say you could root these things through the truly wide open.
And then it's the ones that.
I think, I think we, I appreciate your input and I think we made the point there. And I I concur with Eric and George that I don't know what's in our purview. However, I felt that there's a lot of public interest in this, so I really, I'm glad we had it. So I'd like to open it up to anyone in the public, anyone in the room or anyone. We have some pants, Reese. Let's do the room first. Sarah and Addie. Sarah, you want to go first?
I don't care.
Go ahead. Say it.
Sean, you want me here, there?
Either way, you're good there too, either way.
You can say.
Wherever you want to be.
I I think I feel a little bit of a character misjudgment in that I am not opposed to skills park. I think they sound like a lot of fun. I just am very, I would like to be the voice of the faction that couldn't take the survey, which is the environment. And mountain bikes have impact on the environment. And I only put, put out a few of these, but this is basically the trails within the town forest that are currently being used and and enjoyed, I might add. Yeah. And also the next page would be taking pictures from the skills park at the dance site. So I don't know who to give these skills.
That's right.
Anyway, so I just want to be that voice that says it's a, it's a pretty radical change to topography and an interruption to wildlife quarters. And I I think the trails are fine and fun. I just think that there could be a potential win-win compromise solution of having a skills park on a recreational facility that would honor the public land set aside for different reasons. We have recreation property and we have forest and conservation land. And to me, it just feels that this is super appropriate for a recreational use. And many of the things that Ray just suggested, which is flat and open. I know I spoke to Dave Boeburg in February. He was open to working with any faction that might want to design and implement a skills park at that time. And I just feel that that would be worth pursuing on recreation property. On the town's bylaw that governs the town forest states, it's, quote, "is open to the public for peaceful enjoyment, use compatible with the natural environment." And I just think a skills park sort of goes over into a recreational environment. And with that said, I take it out.
These pictures here in town, you said?
Pardon?
These pictures are taken here in town?
The trail pictures, which say, the first page, the top page, are taken on the current mountain bike trails that we've been referencing behind the Pine Hill School area. And so you can see, it's really fun to have it in payment, you know, and this is, I mean, how much of the land do you dedicate to that? I would also, in this conversation about what is the jurisdiction of where the town forest's purview ends in Starks, Steve cited taking a lot of property out for different usages, but that went before a town meeting vote. And then I think some of it required going before the legislature. And I, this is a little overblown to suggest that, but I mean, it's, I, just something to say.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Addie, or Addie has something than than Sean?
I'm, you're in between chair.
You can just stand up there, Addie, or however you want to do it.
I, I just know that during COVID, my daughter met with her friends on the trails with their bikes and it was a lifesaver to, that they could get out there. I'm not a mountain biker, but I have a number of friends who are very actively involved in building trails in Vermont. And the amount of effort that goes into those who ride these trails to environmentally do them correctly and the etiquette that's involved is so key. And having this integrated in the trail, having people involved and teaching everyone the etiquette in, within the actual setting instead of it just looking like a skate park. I think there's a lot of value to that. I understand a lot of uses happening in town forest. But to make it just on a, like, we're all fields type situation, wouldn't have the same draw and wouldn't have the same translation to the real environment. So I think the biggest thing is, is almost everyone I've ever known who is serious about mountain biking is a huge environmentalist and really does care about the trail. And it's, anyone who directs a trail, they're, they're looking for the way that the water's running, the way the gear have already trampled the paths, they're looking for the natural environment. Pictures that you come across of things that have destroyed trails are probably from those who have not been taught the etiquette. So creating an environment where we are able to teach kids how to use the trail and how to look after them in the right and wrong ways is a good, a really good thing to happen.
Thanks, Andy, Sean, are we going to answer?
Yeah, I was just going to make a point. Two major. Two major significant things have been detrimental to the town forest, or really the forest throughout town. One has been a lack of tree management and not cutting trees down. The second, which probably led to making it worse, was the jet ski launch. So several people said, we're not going to cut any trees down. Please cut some trees down. Please. And if the tree warden gets dragged up there, he's going to beg you to cut some trees down. If not, they're going to fall on your head. That that Pine Hill has a massive amount of die off and it's the safest thing you could do is send a lizard. I wouldn't, I I don't think a couple of mountain bikes are really going to do much damage to the forest with that, as we've already seen.
All right, do we have any, go ahead, Dan.
So I'm just speaking as an individual, not not as a member. So I I live on Pine Hill, really just on the other side, on on the Lake Street side of that. And I started out as kind of a skeptic. And then after walking the site with some of the folks who we heard from tonight and seeing what they were going to do, it really felt to me, one, like it was pretty limited and pretty thoughtful in terms of the the degree to which it would damage, displace flora and fauna and so on. And seeing that and seeing the energy and enthusiasm and the conversations about etiquette really brought me around. And I've also observed, again, I'm on Pine Hill all the time, walking dogs and and out there. There's a lot of trail maintenance that gets done and a lot of the people who are the folks doing that, putting energy in, are people from the mountain bike community because they are really committed to the town forest, to the trail system, to maintaining it. And to me, if we think about the future of town forests, which, you know, live on Pine Hill, back up on it, love it. To think about the future of that, it requires people in town who are committed to that, feel invested in it and are willing to put in the time to maintain it. So that seems to me to be kind of a long-term benefit of of adding a skills park, keeping those people really engaged and involved and committed to preserving the town forest that we have, that we have.
Can we look at her house on her birthday?
You got it, son.
Go ahead.
Hey, can I take a comment?
Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Yeah, of course. Ken Frankel. I moved to town in 1977. Since then, I've lived in four homes in town and it's been very fortunate that all of them have a butt at the towns trail systems. I, as a dog walker, a hiker, a mountain biker, have always been active on the trails. I was raised with the values to respect the environment, really appreciate it. Tried to raise my children with those same values. For the last, well, in recent years, I had the real pleasure of coaching my daughter's youth mountain bike team. It was just a wonderful experience. She got a whole bunch of confidence coming out of it, but more than that, a real level improvement. She went on to become a hiker of New Hampshire's 48,400 footers. She's about to spend her second summer working for the Appalachian Mountain Club. She also worked as a camp counselor at a mountain bike camp. The team was filled with like-minded kids. One of her friends is an outdoor education major at UVM. Another one, a competitive equestrian at Skidmore. She was doing both mountain bike racing and equestrian competitions, found a little bit of both. My point is, I want to give you a little lens into the mountain bike community and the type of people that are going to be attracted to a park like this. I think that the park is really going to help foster the next generation, Sherburne's next generation of environmental stewards. So we talked about who's going to be maintaining this in the future. These are the kids that are grown up to love the environment and are going to be protecting Sherburne's forest in the future. Thank you.
Would she like to be a member of that park?
Two more years.
So we actually have two people, I'm not sure who was first, so Debbie DeMaro, you want to speak?
Yes, I, I'm unmuted, right?
Yes, you can get here, you're fine.
Okay, great. Well, first I want to commend the Forest and Trail for having a public meeting open to a large forum. I was amazed by the things that went on in the town forest, sort of, I would say, under the dark of night with no input from the town. I'm glad that's changed. I am along the lines of Marion Neutra of leaving nature the way it is. I think activities outside are great. I've ridden those trails for the 40 years that I've been in Sherburne and I appreciate nature and I have a few concerns about the general size of this trail or this area that's going to be developed as well as who's going to monitor? Is there going to be regular monitoring? Is there, are there going to be trail bike meets with inviting out of towners? Who's going to monitor that? Are you going to be, you know, if and if you have something like that, is it going to be like a free event? Are you going to be charging? Does the town want the liability? I I'm sounding very negative, but I I am, I guess, basically. Just I'm concerned about all these things that are going to be coming up in the future and whether the organization has thought about these things. I mean, back in the day, when I was the vice president of the Forest and Trail for at least 20 years, you know, we did, it was the horsey scene that did all the maintenance. And I understand, you know, the bikers want to do their thing and I think it's great. I just am concerned about the liability, the the people coming from other places using this and not playing by the rules. So that's basically it. And I just want to say that 40% to 59 is not a landslide. Somebody said that was a landslide and it really is at 19 points. So for the the questionnaire that went out, so I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. The other thing I'd say is we're not really reviewing the decisions tonight. We're just making it aware of the issues. This, I I believe and we'll, we'll see how the select board discusses this, but I don't
I greatly appreciate it being discussed openly. So just want to underline that.
Sure, I mean, I think I, I think you've seen there are a lot of people concerned about nature on on the team also. So I think, Nick, are you, you're next, I think, you were the next hand.
Yes, I'm Nick Rodenhouse, 16 Morris Road. I've been a forest ecologist for over 30 years, taught conservation biology for 20 years. My wife and I walk in that town forest almost every day of the year. We walk about an hour and 20 minutes, so we spend a lot of time in the forest and we love to watch the seasons change. So I'm a great proponent of people spending time outdoors. The more they learn about the outdoors, all the better. If they exercise outdoors like us, that's fantastic. So I don't oppose bike trails at all. I oppose the sighting of this bike trail. And I do it for three different reasons. First, this location chosen compromises the interior of the town forest. So in conservation biology, you know that a larger area is better than a smaller area and it's the area of the interior that really matters. The edges are already disturbed. Edges are places where invasive species enter the forest. Once you put like this bike park, something inside the forest, you create more edge. Not only is the bike park going to be a disturbed area, but so is the area between the bike park and the Pine Hill School and the Pine Hill Playground. So you've taken a large area of that forest and transformed it into all edge. And the interior is important because in that forest, interior sensitive species live. For example, the oven bird and the eastern tohi, ground nesting birds, use that area of the forest. So that's the first thing. It it disrupts the interior of the forest. The second reason is that second picture that Marion showed of the nice grassy, flat area on the top, that isn't grass at all. That's actually a sedge species. It's a sedge meadow and that's the only sedge meadow that I have seen in any of the conservation areas owned and managed by the town of Sherburne. Sedges are able to withstand incredibly extreme environments. And that's, they're actually indicative of thin, poor soils. And the sedges have beautiful little purple flowers. If you went up there now, I went up there today, they're in flower. So they support early flying pollinators that live in the forest. The seeds are fed on by birds and small mammals and insects. So a sedge meadow is a unique habitat and we're plunking this bike park right on top of it. The last reason is I think there are alternative sites available. For example, was the edge of the Jameson Fields considered? There's a slow rise away from those playing fields. A biker could run along the edge of the field, buzz down into the field, back up into the forest. They could do all of the things that they could do in the interior of the forest, but they can do it in an area that's closer to emergency services, that seasonally has bathroom facilities. And so I think there are alternative sites. And I guess those are my three reasons. It compromises the interior. It impacts a very sensitive habitat. And there are other alternative sites. I just have to say something about the town forester. Those standing dead trees are a bonanza for wildlife, for hole nesting birds, for beetles, you name it. The standing dead trees are great and when they fall over, they build soil organic matter and add nutrients to the, to the forest floor. So that's the ecology of things. It's well substantiated. It last, it wasn't clear to me from the initial presentation, how much of the area on that site would be disturbed. The initial picture showed a nice little red line, very thin, just a looped trail. The pictures later on that showed all the training features apparently allowed or required a rather large cleared area, cleared down to the subsoil. So this, as I said, the sedges grow where there's very thin, poor soil, very rocky underneath and an extreme environment. Once that top soil and vegetation is gone, it grows back very slowly, leaving the area open to erosion. So I I I hope that the Forest and Trail Committee will reconsider their decision.
Thanks for your input, Nick. And John, you're next.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Hey, I just, I just wanted to say that I'm in favor 100% of the trail system. And it's worth to compare it to, you know, birders don't really like to observe birds from the baseball field. You can see, you can see birds from Jameson, but it ruins the experience because you're not out there in the natural environment. And, you know, the same, the same is true for mountain biking. It's a hobby or an activity that you enjoy while you're immersed in nature. It's good for your physical health and your mental health and it gives, you know, us adults and all the kids an appreciation for the environment and a sense of urgency and responsibility to protect it. And, you know, the forest, this park, it's on, it's on the edge of the forest. It's not in the interior. It's already, it's right by the cemetery and some disturbed areas and it's going to be accessed by or accessed by existing fire roads. So there's going to be no negative impact to going up to the trail park. And, you know, in my, in my opinion, it's a fantastic site where they've picked. It's easily accessible for the kids who need it most. You know, the more we can encourage kids to get out into the woods, into nature and appreciate it and off their iPads, I think the better off, the more healthy they'll be and the more little environmentalists that will be mentoring in Sherburne. So I like it. I think it's great. I appreciate Rafe and the Forest and Trail Association for all the work they do in maintaining and building the trails. There's no erosion on the new trails. They've been enjoyed by lots of people. So thank you for that.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay, I don't think we need more discussion. No, I think we're finished with discussion. We've gone on this subject for almost fully.
It's a question. I ask a question. Has there been safety drills? Is the fire department going to do, do safety drills up in that area or have they done them?
I know the fire department has vehicles. We're one of the two towns that have a vehicle, people going out and they have an ATV that we just bought last year. So I'm sure that they'll be aware of people around.
I was asking about drills at the time.
Zach, Zach knows what he's doing.
They do off-road drills. They do, but they specifically do it there. I don't know if it's any different there.
They have not been up there yet because it isn't there yet. They can't. We haven't done it yet, so they're not going to drill for it until they know what's happening.
Now, but trails.
Yeah, it's okay.
Sure, they're going to be talking about mountain.
So I'm going to bring it back up here on the floor to the select board. So Paul, you?
Yeah, I want to make a few points. First, putting my lawyer's hat on. The issue of viability, there's a thing called the recreational immunity statute, which basically says if public land is made available for people to use, we're immune from liability. It must be charged someone for the use of that. And I haven't heard anything about charging people for use of it. So if it's open to the public, we're pretty much immune. There are some exceptions, obviously, because lawyers love to make exceptions, but I won't go through all that and all the order of that. But on the issue of liability, it doesn't matter whether people come from out of town or in town or whatever. There's, there's not, there's no liability. Second point is that the use of town forest for recreational purposes is consistent with the law relating to town forest. That's one of the reasons why you have town forest. Town forest is different from land owned by the Conservation Commission. Town forest is open to a variety of uses, including logging and and tree thinning, things like that that you may not see from conservation. So the, just speaking as a lawyer, the uses that are described here are consistent with the law applicable to town forest. The third point I would mention again as a lawyer is that the select board doesn't have jurisdiction over this kind of decision by the town forest. But this is really a town forest decision. If that decision violates the law, that should go to town council. Town council should review it. And if town council feels that it has to go to the state legislature, for example, then we'll follow what town council has to say. But to my knowledge, town council hasn't said that. And as a lawyer, I don't think town council would say that compared to this particular project. The, the third thing I would say is taking off my lawyer's hat and putting on my select board hat. But anything that encourages people to enjoy our town forest, to me, sounds like a good thing. I mean, we don't want to have museums that are these places that you cannot use. Yes, for conservation land, there may be places with endangered species and whatnot. You don't want people to go into. But generally, town forests aren't that. And they are places that I want to encourage public use. And with public use, yeah, there is going to be, there's going to be some conflict between the public being there and all the plants that are growing there. I, I, I recognize that. Whether it's a pedestrian, they might step on a plant or a horse that might step on a plant or a bike that might ride on a plant. There's always that conflict. But I think as a select board member, I would say public enjoyment of open space is a good thing. And that's one of the reasons why we live in a town like this, to to enjoy the public space, enjoy the environment that we're there, not just look at it from our cars and say, isn't that nice? But actually be out there, do the things that you're describing. And I'm quite moved by the enthusiasm of those who are involved in this. It's inspiring. Makes me feel like, gee, I ought to get out there and do it too. It just sounds like a, you know, a, a, a great thing. So I would support this. But I also agree with the point that Marion made and the point that the forestry guy made. I think those were excellent points, that where do you put things to be sensitive to the natural features? If 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 there's a rare plant, don't, don't put your skinny bridge on top of that plant. Move it so that that plant is is protected. That doesn't say, don't do it. It just says, do it in a sensitive way. I entirely agree with with that point and with the forest's point. Let's be sensitive to our environment. But I'm quite heartened by the fact that what I heard here from that gentleman in the back there, that a whole class of people are becoming more environmentally aware, more sensitive because they've had this opportunity. That's a wonderful thing. That actually protects the environment long term rather than That actually protects the environment long term, rather than, again, making these museums that you look at from a distance. So somehow, I don't think that we should be voting one way or the other on this. But if we are going to be voting, I would vote to support the town forest committee.
Okay, thanks. It's hard for me to beat this one to death. I mean, I'll need to bike after sitting in a sucker being for three hours. So I thank you guys for coming and presenting. I think all the input, I think, will be incorporated. And I agree, I don't, then disagree with me. I don't see any need for us to take any action. It seems like it's under jurisdiction and their jurisdiction, and they reviewed it. But I think it's sort of a public good to have it out in the open again.
I certainly wouldn't like, like, I wouldn't actually take a vote to support it or the other. I guess the only thing you'd do is if someone felt strong enough to make a motion to actually overturn it or to go to town council or something like that. But at this point, I'm ready to take essentially no action and not interfere with the decision.
I don't think we have to vote to take no action.
That's what I'm saying.
How about we move to agenda eight?
I need some time and a half now because we removed your facts. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're up, Heidi. I know it's a quick item, but.
We all got it, so.
Yeah. We learned a little about ecology.
That is, you know what I'll do? I'll take you up. Hey, you have a next one.
We also learned how to fear a select board.
How do you do, old town treasurer here today? Excuse me, I also want to give you an update on our mortgage for the next year. What some numbers are. So I'm here tonight to ask for going up to the bond anticipation note for $240,000. We have this $50,000 for Woodhaven, which is another portion of the amount that they issued back from 2012. They currently have $75,000 left unissued. This would leave in $25,000 to be used. And we're using these portions as they renovate apartments. And they need to have another section right now to renovate apartments. Also looking to add the town building amount that they authorized last year, $190,000. We haven't needed to borrow yet. I'm trying to wait till we actually need the money to borrow, but we're trying to get this in before the end of the fiscal year. So I'm here tonight on those items. We have a big fan amount of $2.898 million that was issued last August. I will be coming back to you in a couple of months here to renew that amount. Also add the new amounts we just approved from the ATM if it passes the vote. Coming up next week, we'll be adding the school roof to it. And the way it runs right now, the market is not really allowing for favorable rates for anything longer than a year for short-term borrowing. So the one I'm asking today for May, I'm doing a May to December. Then I'm going to be issuing it again in December to August to align for next August to go for a long-term bond. Next is ATM items. It's currently, if you're moving forward with all the items that we have, you have $4.2 million that's going to mask. And that's kind of the time to go for a long-term bond. Rates have been around for us in case someone's going to ask that. Got any questions on the timeline to what we're looking to do? I'm just asking permission.
Just a question. The interest rates keep going up. They just did another rate increase, so over 5% generally. Wouldn't it make sense to do some of our permanent bondings early? Kind of project to the future. If you wait like a year, it's likely by then to be at 6%, 6.5%.
I hear you much go down, actually.
Yeah, same as Heidi. I think economic forecasts are saying we're probably close to a peak then continuing to go up.
Yeah. And we're actually not ready. We don't quite have enough to go out in the next couple of months for a long-term bond to make it work well. You know, I'll get 2.8 right now that's really eligible to go out for a long-term bond. They don't have to list through. I'd have to go to Block House once it passes the vote, get the green, white, and red. So I need several months to get that front. So I'm hearing that the interest rates kind of are going to be peaking and that they should be stabilizing and coming down a little bit. I don't think it's going to be ever going back to what we saw about two years ago. But I don't have the crystal ball to say one way or another this summer down. I just don't feel where the market right now to go for a long-term bond. You have to go for the standard four rate next year. I don't have that position to do.
Yeah, Heidi's expert in this and has the counsel.
No, that's great. I'm just trying to look at.
I wouldn't go to Silicon Valley Bank or First Republic, but other than that, you're okay.
So Jeff, can I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to go out to bid for a bond anticipation over $240,000 for Woodhaven Elder Housing and Town Building authorized borrower?
So thank you, Sir Second. Okay, any discussion? All right, on the favor?
Hi.
Hi. Four, five to zero. Thank you, Heidi.
Heidi, if it was going to be that quick, I wouldn't have a next one.
Bicycle, Heidi, hike home. I think Deb's next to talk about two reserve fund transfers. You hanging in there with us, Deb?
I am in Buffalo on my way to Ohio, so.
I've done that trip on I-90. I've done that.
Yeah, exactly. My son graduates from the University of Dayton this weekend.
You're very serious for just on 90 going south.
Yes, yeah. Well, we're happy to be traveling through Buffalo in the summer. We've done it in the winter and it's really not fun. So it's, everything's going good. So anyway, I am here to ask for you to approve a reserve fund transfer of $119,269.54. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31, no department financed by municipal revenue shall incur a liability in excess of the appropriation made for such a department. After the last two months of the year, you're allowed to be able to do that. But prior to that, you shouldn't be in a deficit. So this transfer will cover the departments that have exceeded their budget to date. So we have three different transfers. The first would be town buildings of $50,000, roadway improvements of $52,856.82, and property insurance of $16,412.72. And again, the total would be $119,269.54. And this was presented to advisory last night and they did approve this.
Good, thanks. I'm surprised you made it to May without using any of the $300,000.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, this is really a kind of unusual. Normally, we do make it to May, but I really need to cover these deficits.
Understandably, unanticipated. Go ahead, Paul.
Second.
All right, on favor?
Hi.
Hi. Five to zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
All right, let's see here. So now, I'm trying to keep up here. We have a Dr. Andy Morris talking about boards and committees.
Hi, I'm just reading this list forward. The select board adopted a new policy two years ago. And one of the items on the policy is that I have to bring forward a list to show the select board of the upcoming vacancies that we have before us. I have done according to the policy, I have advertised in the newspaper, the press releases twice. It's posted on the website, posted at the town hall, and I'm meeting with the TV. So I think what I'm going to do is post it again in the newspaper. Haven't had a lot of newcomers come forward to say that they might be interested in one of these committees. So I'm just going to try and keep plodding along to see if I can get some people interested. One of the items I do have here is I received an email from a resident who sits, who lives at Leaven Fox. He sits on the Board of Trustees, we have the market regulations. And we had had a vacancy. The select board representative, Leaven Fox, has been, January was over. So he's asked me if it would be a conflict of interest if his wife could be considered as a select board rep to sit on the Leaven Fox Board of Trustees. And I didn't, when I answered him, I spoke to Jeremy about it. We thought we just would, what was it, the select board for them to discuss? And I told the gentleman I would get back to him.
Let's leave two things here first. What I'm going to suggest is what she's doing already on the boards and committees. My suggestion is what if we take all the boards and committees and we sign each one of them that the lightweight that's leading us tonight and assign three or four committees to each of us so that we have a sponsor on the select board to help focus on that committee for recruiting, generally.
Well, the Board of Select has considered having liaisons before.
Yeah.
We ended up in all these fights over who gets the good committees.
Well, it's like the lottery. We'll just draw ping pong balls and I have a fishbowl.
It's really, it's not worth the vicissitudes that it causes.
Well, the problem is it's not working.
Well, last year, actually, we had some new volunteers. And I think that came from, you had Vicky Relis working with you, posting a lot of stuff on Nextdoor.
And we're still doing that. I had G D do it on Nextdoor this year.
You know, and I think maybe getting on, there's a Facebook page too for the Sherburne, Sherburne family groups and that kind of thing, and trying to get in front of some more people like that.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Actually, on the clerk, on the clerk that emailed us, a lot of towns are having trouble getting volunteers. And someone had raised the issue of, has anyone had like a volunteer fair night or something? So I mean, maybe we need to think outside the box and do something like that, whether, you know, at Pine Hill or at the community center or even here or the new library, exactly, to have people come and see what's available and what they can do and what's the commitment for every seed of commitment.
You know, you get people there, we'll approve a one-day liquor license.
People who sign up.
Everyone's having trouble getting.
We were at Conca this year. We had some hard times getting people to run for elected positions. So G's idea is a good idea, but I'm going to modify it slightly, which is maybe the library here. If we have like a little booth or some kind of library craft fair, you know, that just had a few volunteers there to do it that way, because people will come walking through anyway. Guaranteed to rain on library fears, but other than that, it's going to be good. So all right, I take your point, Paul. But we definitely need to figure out, I agree with Jackie, figure out new ways because we are.
So one thing the other towns do for the main boards is they make them compensate for planning board.
Make them what?
Compensate.
Excited.
Oh.
You get excited.
Was the select board compensated?
Do you know in Dover, their Board of Select was, they haven't changed it in so many years. The chair gets $250, no, $200. The chair gets $150 and the other person gets $100. It's a much hourly rate on that.
It's hopefully.
Please, sir. Annually, they.
Annual, that annual.
I think they.
I don't know. No, I know.
After work, they have to, yeah.
But I mean.
All right.
Yeah.
We keep it in mind, and I do relate tonight. I definitely are going to have to do more than we're already doing.
It's about the issue of the husband and wife. I've had experience with that, is town council. And it develops all kinds of resentments on part of other people when they have to deal with the husband and wife team. Because the husband and wife team go off together and talk about things and then come back. Always on the same page. And there really isn't the give and take and debates and all that. And it's just not worth it.
It's just compounded by having market ratings versus a board rating. So that was rather than that.
So I have a question. I'd like to review our bylaws. Are there things that limit people from doing it? Like, for example, advisory. Advisory per our town bylaws cannot actually serve any other committees. Maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't. But we really do have a pool of like, maybe, I don't know, 50 people that run the town. You know what I mean? Is there any, are there any of those restrictions that we want to consider removing? Want to review our bylaws and look at things where.
Look at that. Actually, someone I know, Mary Wolf threw me off of Land Conservation or whatever. But.
But that's common almost every time.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to be.
I know. I understand.
Your own advisory, guess what? You're going to be in favor of everything that the select board has voted for.
I get that that's one example, you know what I mean? Is there other ones that make sense? Like, I know, what is it? I'm sorry, what's the employment one called?
Personnel.
Personnel board, you know? I think that one can, but you could still have rules. Recruit yourself off whatever department you're interacting. You know what I mean? Because there aren't conflict avoidance laws out there. We've been over conservative, such as limiting the ability to fill other positions.
That may be true, but also ideally, we like to have more voices.
And more diversity of voices.
And more diversity of voices. So I think that would be a backup situation. But I think if we want to put together a recruiting plan, it should be bringing in people that haven't been in the group before.
If you can, and that's also, I feel like in all the years I've been on select board, it's interesting. We've, almost every year, we have this discussion. Every year, we talk about recruiting people and every year, we talk about that. And when I was on the planning board itself, another eight years on planning board, it was one contested race, which is you, by the way, you're on it. And it was that same thing where we get something controversial coming before us. We get a crowd who filled this room like standing room only. And I would make my same speech every time. This is wonderful. You're engaged in this project. Is this considered volunteering? Blah, blah, blah. I just think this is a reality.
Okay, I do have to say, I just want to point out that last year, we brought two people in for Conservation Commission and they all quit because we suggested. So. They want to know people, so.
All right.
Okay.
So I think we'll not go with that.
Okay.
So that takes care of that. Now, are you going to do the one? We have a, I received an email from Rick Novak. He's got a candidate that he wants proved to be.
Second.
Is a lawyer's worth to have?
Yeah, yeah, with so many 40Bs, he's trying to get ready, so.
Yeah, he sounds great. I have nothing against it at all. I do have a question. What about the procedure? You know, does a zoning board person have to be advertised a month in advance?
I don't know about that.
Well, that list was advertised with zoning.
Oh, okay.
So we met the 30-day requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing is that this person is going to be, is limited. This is going to be associate manager.
It still should do the 30-day number.
Yeah. We did. They start as associate, but she did for 30 days, but he's also going to be an associate manager.
Yeah.
All right, so Deb. All right, second?
Second.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, as well. Right to zero. Good job, guys. All right, Jeremy, you're going to talk about Charles River Health District.
Yeah, this is just an update and I'll be brief given the hour. So the board may recall back in January, it was a notice of intent. The chair of the select board and the chair of the Board of Health submitted to commit to studying, looking into regional public health services. That was with the towns of Needham, Dover, and Medfield. So that letter of intent said that we would undertake and partner with those communities and their consultant to investigate any kind of shared services that might be available. So we've met three times. Daryl Beardsley and myself, representing Sherburne, had these meetings with other town representatives from Needham, Dover, and Medfield. We've had two meetings directly with Dover. The funding for this, it comes from the state. It's $150,000 in the state action for Public Health Excellence Program, SAFE program. And then there's also another grant program, the Contact Tracy and Case Investigation Grant, which is $140,000. That's the estimates for FY '24. So those two grant funds, funding sources together are what this regional collaborative has to share. Through our meetings and our, we've come up and identified some synergies. So the initial goals of this study were to identify these synergies and to identify the next steps. So we've found that some concrete steps that we want to implement in FY '24, starting with a memorandum of understanding that would essentially commit us to continue this conversation. And it would spell out how those grant funds would be shared with the communities and how the decisions would be made. Going forward, there would be, we've identified some shared training, a shared permit system for Board of Health that would be implemented. Sherburne will get two iPads to use with this permit system. Having the shared permit system would allow us to maybe in the future share more of our services in the region on the same platform. We're going to continue to investigate. We're going to continue to investigate opportunities to share our food inspection services, so five inspections. And the big one for Sherburne is we've identified through this, this grant funds, these grant funds and with the partnership with Dover in particular, the ability to fund a public health nurse through this program. So Dover has currently funded 25 hours of a public health nurse in their, in their funding for FY24. These grant funds could fund another 15 hours to make a full-time health nurse that we could share between the two communities. That would be managed through this regional public health district, so. The MOU, the draft that's been put together would be executed by the town administrators of the communities, just essentially saying that we're still committed to doing this going forward into FY24. And that MOU was modeled after the Franklin Regional Council of Governments and the Great Old Borough's Partnership for Health. Those are two other regional health organizations that have been set up. This would be another called the Charles River Public Health District. So just giving you an update there, I'm not looking for any particular action on the board other than support.
Definitely.
Our shared services. Question and emotion, did the Board of Health vote to approve it?
He said he wasn't looking for action. They, they have, so we've been working with, so Daryl Beardsley has been their representative. There hasn't been any formal vote of the Board of Health.
That's what I'm saying, because first of all, I would say as a lawyer, they bring this fine, but it's, it's, there's, falls under a statute. The Board of Select authorized the assignment. So for us to authorize the assignment, I want to be sure the Board of Health has voted that they want to do this.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah. If they haven't voted yet, then.
Yeah, I know they've been involved, but if they haven't voted, I think having that is still the issue. Just remind Daryl.
Yeah.
They haven't had a meeting in a couple of weeks, because I know Lisa's stepped down from the committee, they have two new members on board.
I think we saw the value of this sort of thing during COVID. You know, we were just working with Dover, but it's so much better than going it alone in Sherburne. And, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it seemed referred to, and that, that was sort of volunteers, it's closer to almost the emergency dispatch center. All right. So thank you very much, Jeremy. And so do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Go for it. Second.
All in favor?
I have a question about it, actually.
All right.
You don't want to go home yet.
Yes, we do.
About the, the one-day liquor license for the Pine Hill School CSA event, you know, at Silverwood Farms. My, my question is not about whether this is genuinely an appropriate thing. But, you know, Silverwood Farms is coming before this zoning board only next week to get their permit to have such events. And so I'm looking at this timing, just.
Get their permits to do what?
To have.
This event, this particular event?
To have events at.
Jackie has.
No, Jackie. They, they already have events at Silverwood, they're just coming in, I believe, in front of the planning board next week. But we've approved one-day porn licenses for Silverwood before, so.
Oh, yes, I know, I know that, but I, you know, they, when the planning board passed that bylaw for events at farms, basically, Silverwood, there was a provision where the, the venue would have to come before the zoning board appeals to get their permit, to get a permit to actually do it.
They, they have not, they're not coming in front of the zoning board, it's the planning board. But planning board has asked the zoning board and other boards for comments.
So they have actually submitted to the planning board.
Right. Oh. So that's what it is. And I know that the bylaw that was passed, I think it's more that it has to be approved by the planning board, not the zoning board. I think that's what it is, because it's a farm event.
Take, take them, we're going to the planning board.
Right.
Just the planning board.
Okay.
All right. All right, we, we booked a second, and are we ready to vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that sounds good. It's easy to get votes at 10 o'clock. So are there ready select board reports?
I have one.
Go ahead.
First, well, most importantly, I just wanted everybody to know that last night, we came to a tentative agreement with the teachership, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, no, we have the tentative agreement, they still have to have it ratified by the union. And then the school board, school committee still have to vote on it, but last night, we came to a tentative agreement with negotiations.
Thank you for being our representative on that too.
And just, since this is my last meeting, I just kind of say thanks to everybody that I've worked with over the last few years, 10 years, including the time as advisor, so. And Paul? Next spring, I want you to hear all my voice to blow up in your head and says, the only way to reduce taxes as well. Consent.
Sorry, that's over.
No, no.
Thank you. Control spread.
Thank you. All right, that's.
You have been listening to me.
And my select board report is to thank everyone who comes to the library.
It was well attended. It was well attended.
Yeah, very well attended and people got back to me afterwards.
We want to thank you and Eric and all the towns. And all those building committee and library trustees. Everybody is helping that.
So George, you're not allowed to move that we adjourned yet? Hi, I have a problem. Whereas George Morrell, a resident of the town of Sherburne since 2004, has served the Sherburne community with unending energy, enthusiasm, and amazing sense of humor. Whereas George has served on various boards and committees, making significant contributions that will long be remembered. He served on the Revenue Development Committee from 2011 to 2014. He was a member of the Advisory Committee from 2014 to 2017. He became a distinguished member of the select board in the year 2018. Whereas George's tenure on the select board, he displayed a high grade of respect for his fellow members and residents who came before the select board. George always tried to be right by the citizens of the town, split with and smiles, always made it a pleasure to work with them. Now, therefore, we, the select board of Town of Sherburne, on behalf of all its citizens, we send our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to George Morrell for making the town of Sherburne a great place to work and live. George will be missed by all who have worked with you, especially because I was on advisory.
One time.
In witness whereof, we have caused the seal of this town to be affixed to this proclamation on this fourth day of May in the year 2023. Thank you. Get friends, oh, you can have this to go with it.
Can you give the card to Chuck?
Yeah, I know, I have a card for you.
From the Council on Aging.
Thank you.
Thank you for the chair, that's fantastic.
Well, it hasn't been officially given to you yet.
Oh. So yes, we wanted to present you, you know, we had to do Chuck in COVID times virtually, so.
Yeah.
The whole reason we had an in-person meeting tonight was to hear his theory. So.
Sit in, we can take a picture.
Something, yeah, we want to get a picture, come out and, you going to take a picture?
He's going to sit in.
Yeah.
And then it'll end up on Jeffrey's Facebook somewhere.
Jeremy. We can look at the table, one of these shorts is a gavel.
Thank you.
I'm still going to be around, so.
Next, I'll be sitting in the audience, helping you guys.
Not going anywhere.
We have always vacancies on this committee. This year, at the next meeting, I'm going to appoint teachers.
Yeah, yeah, we're already.
Being in audience on a Saturday.
Oh, I won't be at that, I won't be at that. We'll send all the texts then.
All right, so now I skipped, if any, T A reports that you want to.
No, just two quick things, just a reminder of the training, the conflict of interest training, public media law training on the May 15th. And to thank Jackie for getting in to the Attorney General's office very promptly. The necessary paperwork to the Attorney General's office. That went in yesterday or the day before and they've notified us that they'll have their review done by July 31st.
And also the elections Tuesday.
And when you vote, bring in some donations.
Vote early to vote often, yeah.
That usually can't stop.
No, do not vote often.
That's a code, I forgot. All right, everybody, thank you at home, if you're still with us here, and thank you everywhere that came.
Move to a chair.
I'll move to a chair.
Ready to join.
And we have a second?
Second.
Well, wait a second, I think we should keep George here. This is last meeting, why let him go early?
Well, you guys enjoy.
Just one more line, yeah? I was like, all in favor of that one?
He said aye.
I said aye.
What are you supposed to say after that? You said say, oh, hold.
What? It's going to be Monday.
Monday.